A simple definition that we all know that yeah, dematerialization is something that uh we are removing the physical. Securities certificate and we are converting it into a converting into an electronic form. As well as we also know the advantages of dematerialized securities. It is faster, it is efficient and and it is easy to use and it is um. Uh as you can say, um it is helpful for the companies to uh keep a track of. All the securities that they have issued as well as uh there are no um like before. There used to be uh so many issues regarding the physical share certificate. It got torn or it got stolen, something like that. But all these were um covered up by the dematerialization. Uh process. So um what was the law before? So every company making public offer. Now when we hear about public offer, we know that only public companies can make public offer. So that can be either listed company or unlisted company. So eh any of the two if they are making a public offer. Or any such class of companies that the that is prescribed shall issue securities only in the dematerialized form. So they don't have an option. They have to uh you know issue securities in the dematerialized form. According to the provisions of Depository Act. And any other company which is not mentioned here like. Apart from the listed and unlisted public companies or the classes of companies that are prescribed, apart from that, before they had an option. It was there um it was on a voluntary basis that either you can uh issue securities in the D M A T form. Or you can issue in the physical form. So before it was all voluntary basis apart from the ones which were. Uh which were asked to mandatorily um issue dematerialized securities. So now what we are talking about, which is the topic for today, is the amendment which was issued on twenty seventh October twenty twenty three. With respect to private companies. Now also apart from private companies, um there will be companies that will be left on voluntarily basis. But now for now, rule nine B has been inserted and I have attached the exact uh amendment over here. Which says that every private company other than a small company shall within the prescribed period issue the securities only in D M A T form. And facilitate dematerialization of all its securities. Now here, uh as on thirty first March uh two thousand twenty three. We have to see which all private companies uh exist on that day which are not small companies. So apart from them, they are given a timeline of eighteen months which is thirtieth September two thousand twenty four. So till thirtieth September two thousand twenty four, uh they can uh they can um convert their. Existing uh physical form securities into dematerialized form and from first October two thousand twenty four onwards. Whenever they'll issue securities, it should be in the dematerialized form. So this is the whole um you know synopsis of the uh. Amendment that has been issued, that uh now private companies apart from small companies will have to um. Issue certi- securities in D M A T form and uh. Till thirtieth September two thousand twenty four, if they have any existing securities in physical form, they have to convert it before that. Time limit. Now uh starting from here, uh this is the procedure for the conversion of physical. Uh physical form of securities into dematerialized form. The first two steps would be important for us. Because that is directly related to us being involved in the process. The rest of the steps which will be coming in the. Uh proceeding slides will be not be as connected to us because that is the internal procedure that will be carried on. So the first step is the client must have an account with D P. Now here, D P is the short form of depository participant. Depository participant is an intermediary. Between a depository and investors. So these depository participants are registered with N S D L and C D S L. Here, N S D L and C D S L are the depositaries of India and um these depository participants can be. Uh can be individuals or companies and they might include uh financial organizations, banks or brokerage firms. These uh depository participants are accredited by depository and regulated by C B. And as of sixth December twenty twenty one, even though it's a kind of old data two years back. But still, uh as per that data that we have, it we found that there were two hundred eighty one depository participants registered with N S D L. Which also included some of the very known depository participants such as J P Morgan Chase Bank. And S B I S G Global Security Services Private Limited. So uh moving on, so the first and foremost step is the client must have an account with the depository participant. And then he'll have to submit a request to the depository participant in the D R F for dematerialization. D R F is D M A T request form. So he will need to um submit the D M A T request form along with the certificates of securities to be dematerialized. Now, D R F has to be filled for each I S I N. I S I N is International Securities Identification Number. And this is a unique twelve digit alphanumeric identification number allotted for a security. So for example, we have equity fully paid up shares, so that will have one I S I N. And on the other hand, if we have equity partly paid up shares, that will have a separate I S I N. So if if the client has both equity fully paid up shares and equity partly paid up shares, so there will be two I S I Ns and. Uh hence there will be two D R Fs that needs to be submitted. And while uh we are preparing all the documents, we need to make sure that the certificates that we will be submitting. We need to deface it, that is, it is uh the annexure is given on how it should look like. But it it is basically a stamp in which it is written surrendered for dematerialization. So the first step is very simple if I explain it in short, that the client must have an account with D P. And he needs to submit a D M A T request form along with the certificates. And the certificate needs to have a deface of uh by the writing surrendered for dematerialization. The step two is the D P will verify that the form is duly filled in and the number of certificates, number of securities. And the security type are as given in the D R F. So this is basically the uh verification process. That the depository participant will carry out uh to check whether the uh form and the certificates. And the details given in are uh right. And thus and he will the and the depository participant will scrutinize the form. Scrutinize includes verifying the client's signature with the specimen's signature. And he will find the specimen signature on the account opening form when the client opens the account with the depository participant. And uh the scrutinizing process will also include comparing the names on the D R F and the certificate, I S N number. Paid up uh paid up status etcetera. So all this will uh be carried out by the depository participant and. And the next step, uh the security if the securities are not in order, they are returned to the client and acknowledgement is obtained. So if there is any discrepancy in the D R F form, uh as well as the certificates that are surrendered. If there is any discrepancy, then um the securities are rejected by the depository participant and it will be returned to the client. And if they are accepted, then the form um in case the securities are in order, the details of the request as mentioned in the form. Are entered in the D P M and dematerialization request number will be generated by the system. D P M is the software provided by N S D L to the depository participant. So basically, the person who has verified and scrutinized the um uh form and the certificate. That person will enter the details into the D P M which is the software and D R N will be generated by the system. Following that, uh a person other than the person who entered the data because uh uh we all know that uh. There is uh it is a matter of uh 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 security. So um it is always better to keep checks at every step, right? So that's why the person who has not entered the details will verify the details recorded for the D R N. And the request is then released by the depository participant which is forwarded electronically to D M. D M here is depository module which is also a software system. So everything is running through a software after uh the. Form details are uploaded in the D P M, uh it is verified and forwarded electronically to the depository module. Then the depository module forwards the request to the issuer at or R and T agent electronically. R and T agent is registrar and transfer agents. So basically, these are the people uh who will actually um. Uh accept or reject the request of uh conversion of physical certificates to uh electronic certificates. Uh R and T agents are the trusts or institutions that register and maintain detailed records of the transaction of investors. For the convenience of mutual fund houses. Then the D P will fill the authorized portion in the D M A T request form and punch the certificate on the company name. Uh this is uh like a procedure that you know that just a way of doing things. It does mention that uh they have to punch the certificate on the company name so that you know the material information is not destroyed. So this is just a procedural thing that um you they need to fill in the authorized portion of the form. And uh punch the certificates and then dispatch the certificates along with the form and covering letter to the issuer or or an R and T agent. Then the R and T agent confirms acceptance of the request of dematerialization in a system. And the same will be forwarded to the D M if the request is found in order. So if we see, um everything is uh running through the. Through a systematic uh software system and everything has been channelized in such a way that um. We can track uh which uh which part of the process are we in. And as I said, R and T agent are the ones who either accepts or rejects the uh request of dematerialization. And these steps does not involve direct client uh involvement. But it is just for our knowledge purpose that we should know that how the process goes on and. If there is any discrepancy, we can take action on time. Moving forward, the D M will electronically authorize the creation of appropriate credit balances in the client's account. So once everything is done, the acceptance is done, then the module, the depository module. Will electronically authorize the creation of appropriate credit balance in the client's account because the client has created the D M A T account at the beginning of the process. So now the uh you know his uh account will automatically be credited. Then the D P must inform the client of the changes in the client's account following the confirmation of the request. Uh apart from all these procedures, uh we would also have a question regarding the fees. Because we are applying for the dematerialization of securities, so there must be some fees involved. Here, uh it depends on uh the types of security and which depository participant you approach to. So here are uh some of the different price ranges that are given, which uh different depository participant charges from the clients. Uh it it differs, it depends on the securities, if it's a share, if it's a bond, if it's a debenture. So based on that, uh the prices may differ, but this is just a glimpse of uh what would be the price. Um if we um see or if we Google or if we approach a depository participant, we would know. Um what charges they would um charge us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh ma'am is, um okay, tell me what is your paid up capital ma'am, what is your borrowings, what is your this thing? So that I can tell whether you are a small company or no, but the part what ma'am is telling is that you don't know the limits only. Because of which you are not able to sort of give the response to a client who is ma'am, right? That is what he wants him means. Yeah, go on, Deepika.
Okay, so that is what something is missing, Malika, but what you can do is you can go through what is a small company. You know, and probably you can shoot out an email that this is what a small company is. Probably you can specify all the conditions and a bullet bullet format or a table format, whatever is more suitable. So that everybody can see and check whether is it applicable to any of our clients? Should we inform anyone that see this is something which has come up and you know this is the time limit and before this. Your shares needs to be dematerialized, right?
Right.
So that is something which you can send out through an email.
Right.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, if anyone else has any other questions, please go on.
Yes, for the discussion because uh maybe it is it is it is the important thing that what Deepika just said, that it is applicable for our clients or not. Do we do anyone knows the limits for small company so that at least we can discuss for clients and all. Ahmed.
So.
The exams.
Yeah, that is like paid up capital for. Turnover forty crore.
Okay, and what if it's a subsidiary or something?
Okay, so we have to see.
Okay.
And what's that actually?
Uh sub uh as far as I remember because I had uh filled this M G D S I know that uh. Subsidiaries are not small companies. Because it has a holding company, right? If it already has a holding company, it cannot be categorized as a small company.
So in that case, in that case, you are telling that any subsidiary company will always, for them, always it will be applicable.
Uh yes, ma'am.
To go for a D M A T uh dematerialization of shares.
Yes.
I'll just summarize whatever you have told so far. So one is basically eighteen months was a timeframe, but eighteen months starts from thirty first March twenty twenty three. Which means September twenty twenty four is the end date by first October. All the companies except the small companies should be dematerialized, the shares should be dematerialized, correct?
Yes.
Okay, number two, the the I S I N number. Uh should be individual for each category of shares. Correct?
Yes sir, yes sir.
Venture, uh you know, prefer again preference share me. Convertible, non convertible.
Yes.
That sort of defines the category of the this thing.
Yeah, yes sir, yes sir.
Okay, uh small company again, I'm sure you will check and let us know what exactly and you'll drop an email. Uh but I'm again assuming that the small company definition is via Companies Act. Uh because what and is this is a different definition in accounting standard, small company and here is a different definition. So let's that also you confirm over in email that you know it is the definition uh is aligned with this uh Companies Act. While I use Karna and not the accounting standard.
Yes.
Right, and uh the main part is that you know the application like you mentioned. Application has to be made to R and T, right? That is registrar and transfer agent, right?
Uh we have to make an application to the depository participant. Now it's after depository participants takes in the application and. So they they are the ones who will send it to the R and T agents, not us.
He will not be the client or the individual will not, I mean the consultant will not be in in touch with R and T. That they will only be touch in touch with depository, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and there are certain slap charges on on each of these I S I N and you know on on each of these. Uh parameters, correct? That is how it is.
Yes, on different types of securities, there are different charges.
Okay, uh have they anywhere defined the repercussions if someone is non compliant? Uh like because we are talking about less than you know whatever ten months now, right? In ten months, we all the private limited companies which are not small companies have to get into a dematerialized form, D M A T form.
Yes.
Correct, so. Uh kya, what is the repercussion? Any idea?
Uh in the amendment, I didn't find any uh penalty for uh non compliance. But I'll look into it if there is any others uh notification regarding the penalties and get back to you.
Okay, usually if I start the process, say uh tomorrow. Uh of D M A T of getting a D M A T, dematerialization of the shares or stocks or you know uh this thing. How long does it take uh to end the process? What is the duration of the process? Uh that is something also you can check and get back. I'm sure you if you have an answer, you can give, but otherwise you can check and let us know.
Yes sir.
Uh iske alawa, I don't see uh any other point. Uh these again are. Uh what you have presented is a very uh sort of a brief and high level thing. And if there's anything which we have, we need to get information on, we have to dig a little deeper and get get the information, right? That is how it is.
Hmm.
Done. Thank you for this informative presentation, Malika.
Thank you sir.
Yeah, anybody else, you can go ahead. Any questions if you guys have?
Hi, I just less of a question to Malika and more for everybody else. So uh what exactly would be uh the impact of this? Just that even before any uh prospective sale or something, we have to be very sure on what the holdings are. And once it gets crystallized, it will not be possible to change it. That's that's what I understand. And for capital gains purpose also, period of holding and everything is uh once captured in the D M A T form, we can't really go back and manipulate this. Right? Is there any other big thing that we are missing as to the impact?
Can you repeat me because I.
I think what is the purpose of this, you know, physical to D M A T vala I angle? And one point which she could think think of is that holding period cannot be manipulated like earlier, right? Where where you know people is to have same company got four different shares, share certificates, right? I mean of different dates. Uh which uh which is which is incorrect or you know uh not a right way to. So here, once it goes into D M A T, it is from that day this thing. Uh is there any other purpose? Why you know uh R O C or you know uh M C A thought that you know we should go for a D M A T of. Dematerialization of private limited companies as well. Uh second purpose was like Malika suggested in the earlier slides, you know. Uh loss of certificates and all those things will will you know get eliminated. And you know theft and all that, that is second. Any other uh you know uh thought process around this?
Maybe protecting the small shareholders' interests to some degree because in a. Private company, there may be some minority shareholders uh who.
One reason is private limited companies uh earlier in India, it was not. It was not the most preferred form, right? Like most of the businesses used to be conducted in. Say partnership firm or sole proprietorship kind of. Now it is, I think it is more than ever that. Private limited companies are the first choice for everyone and people want to. It may be a startup or a small business or anything, uh you know, one is that they want to go ahead with the private limited company. And with that, uh since everything else is moving towards digitization, right? Like everything, we have this Digi Locker, we have, you know, if you see the government initiatives, everything is now towards. Uh like paper form is almost becoming redundant.
Hmm.
So I think one reason is that that okay, you know, Abhi Naheen Toh. Even after one year, two year, they would have taken this or you know. It is one of steps towards this digitization where.
That's why we are not getting a new printer also.
Yeah, so it is, yeah, it is like.
But how is minority uh interest protected? I don't see that as a change because if you're. Therefore, if you are a shareholder, be minority, be majority, you still, how is that protective angle coming?
I don't know, maybe it can be easily manipulated or they can be pushed out, something of that sort.
Yeah, no, no, that I don't think a challenge. One of the biggest thing which I could think of is. Uh revenue for the government, not terms of uh uh you know this. Getting a D M A T or whatever, that anyway is going to depository and an R and T agents and all that. But uh because the startups go for a funding rounds of, you know. Uh this entire startup ecosystem works on a funding round where it goes up to, you know, J K L, you know, series, right? And there is always this, uh in 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 normal listed clients, there is a securities transaction tax. Which is which is right now not being levied on any of these transactions which is being done, right? So that is something which will come into play at a very small scale initially and you know that will sort of give a. Because that S T T right now on the on the uh D M A T account of listed, it is happening, right? And it is one of the biggest chunk, biggest number and if you see the charges, that is one of the biggest. So same thing I think government wants to do with the private limited also because the transactions are quite, you know, at. At least for the bigger startups, right? Unicorns and uh you know around that that range. The trans does at par with the listed clients, right? Listed securities. Where you know one round itself is around uh you know five hundred million, right? Uh we we are seeing like Lenscut is raising five hundred million now. Uh right, so that so that is one other thing, five hundred million car you you know. Uh whatever the current rate of securities transaction taxes for listed into divided by, you know, if they do one tenth also. That's a significant revenue which government will take. And uh when you are paying unlisted shares, why not pay on. You know, unlisted shares also is the mindset. I think that is where you know uh all this coming from. Uh I mean, I I we I feel that you know. It's a it's a right step only because government is also started thinking like a businesses, right? Typical businesses where I can extract more revenue in the current system.
Hmm.
They are doing that to fund the development, right? Whatever development they want to do in beat infrastructure or whatever, that is something that they are doing. Right, so that is, I apart from that, yeah, I mean uh ease of ease of business is definitely there like. Deepika mentioned, you know, private limited and you know, having the shareholdings and all those in a dematerialized form. Uh where multiple series is happening and change of hands is happening, it's easier to sort of track. And this will also, you know, be a game changer for ESOP.
Right.
Right, right now, I know ninety percent of the startups don't have a proper ESOP structure for ESOP. Uh you know, it's it's not done in a right way, but to sort of put everything on a D M A T. Your pool has to be created properly, your dematerialization has to happen and that ESOP that uh ESOP or options or. You know, units of R S Us or whatever has to be issued via the D M A T form only to the employees. Uh so it's uh, I think it's a very uh nice game changing move for for uh for. You know, the entire system of companies and you know M C A and all of it, how much it can be achieved by September twenty four? I think only time will tell because we are talking about less than nine, you know, ten months or so. Uh and considering this, you know, even if they are breaching small company uh benchmark. Uh the majority of them are still in the mindset of non compliance and low compliance cost and all that, right? This sort of uh comes as a additional compliance cost which nobody wants to spend. Because everybody is on a, you know, on the verge of either breaking even or loss making or you know just. Breaching the small company threshold to and that threshold is also, you know, at one point you are a small. A small company, you breach that and again you become a small company, good possibility. Right? Because you breach a revenue of forty crores or whatever, forty crores is the revenue, right? What is the benchmark for revenue?
Turnover.
Turnover?
Yes.
Forty, you you reach, but there's a good possibility in the next quarter or next financial year you come down to thirty two. Because of the uh economy or because of the, but then once you have breached it, you have no choice but to sort of. Those are the things. I don't think anything else I can think of apart from this, but yeah, I mean this is one of the major item I see.
Hmm.
Yeah, and one more thing, Malika, I wanted to check is basically, uh if someone wants to go for it voluntarily. Is it possible or like how is is it? is it possible or like how is, is, it is not like, it is not available?
Uh, yes ma'am, voluntarily, so it's available. Uh, yeah, yeah, becau, because before this amendment also, uh, there was an option that any company other than the companies they have already mentioned, they can either issue the securities in the Demat Form or, uh, in the physical form, it was on their, uh, choice. But now also they can convert it voluntarily, they don't have to have, uh, like, a notification, making it mandatory for that.
Okay, okay, so maybe after few years, that one will also be like a mandatory thing that.
Yeah, because I guess eventually everything will be digitalized. Uh, because, uh, the main thing is they have, the government needs to keep a check on, uh, these companies. Uh, as listed companies are already regulated by SEBI and all. So, uh, by keeping a check on private companies, small companies, eventually they'll have a control over all the companies that are there in India. Hmm. Okay.
The exam goers, have any question? This will be one of the question, hey, oh, now Companies Act is only not there, no? It's there, I don't, I don't know, I, I, you guys have to tell.
It is there, no?
It is. No, it's not there. Final.
But it's a self face.
Huh? Sorry Shiva.
It is there sir, but it's as a self-paced exam.
Self-face book hole can, never allow, no, the self-face. You fancy what you guys would use it, self-paced and all, book, copy exam.
Your voice is break. Adam, your voice is also break.
Not audible.
Now, now am I audible?
Actually, Deepika, your internet has some issue, we can hear it in.
There is a bad network, so, that is why it is, but, uh, yeah, so, copy exam, no Shiva.
How sir, I say sir, it's not work.
Yeah, okay, that's, so, done, uh, so.
Uh, by the way, I have just, uh, one, uh, point to discuss. Hmm, because now we all know that depository participants are regulated by SEBI. And all the private companies till date was always regulated or, uh, uh, have the applicability of company laws and the tribunal. I'm just thinking whether, if there will be any issue or any particular case or suit to be filed, then regarding all the share certificate and all, will it go to the SAT? Security appellate tribunal or will it go under Companies Act and all? Because, uh, it could be because there is, I'm so, so my question is that there is overlapping of the power, powers of SEBI or Companies Act, is it?
The question is basically who will regulate this Demat shares which, correct?
Yeah, kind, yeah, is there any overlapping of powers?
Okay, okay, that again, I, I mean, uh, we'll have to look into the fine literature and, you know, when it becomes mandatory, what powers have been, uh, given to whom?
Uh, ask for me. Yeah, yeah, I know the one.
Yeah, I think it will be when the first instance is given. It will, uh, since it's a private company, it will, the first thing they will go to is NCLTR, ROC. And post that if there's a need, it might be referred to respective, you know, tribunal, be it on, on, on MCA side only or, like you said, securities appellate tribunal or something like that. Is what I, from a logical sense is what I foresee. But yeah, again, we'll have to see the fine literature to understand where, what is the hierarchy.
Okay, yeah.